Good evening. Welcome to the March 14, 2022 Troy City Council meeting. Please rise for the invocation this evening. We're honored to have Rabbi Alicia Harris from Shur Tikva, who's been here a little bit, but she's newly installed as of Friday night. So we're very welcome and honored to have her here. After the invocation, please remain standing because we have a very special Pledge of Allegiance from Cub Scout PAC 1705, our We Blow an Arrow of Light Den from Hill Elementary School. So good visitors tonight. Go ahead Rabbi.
Holy One, Spirit of all, love, Creator, Invoker of justice. We pray this evening for calm and peace within our homes, within our city. We offer so much gratitude for the ability to be together this evening, not have to do this over Zoom, to be able to celebrate seeing each other's smiles, to be present, to be focused. We ask that you continue to help these leaders serve our city with compassion, with justice in the forefront of their mind, and with the knowledge that they are part of our community as they lead us. We are so grateful to be together this evening. Amen.
Thank you Rabbi Alicia. Very honored to have you here tonight. I attended her dedication ceremony on Friday evening, and it was a beautiful ceremony. And that congregation surely loves you.
Thank you. Well, thank you. I have been here since 2020, but I haven't seen any of your beautiful faces yet. So anytime you want to come by, please do. And thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you. And now Cub Scout PAC 1705, please come forward and lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. I just met with this group, and they're a good group. So.
All right. You guys ready? Scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. It's good to meet all of you. The Troy City Council meeting of March 14, 2022 is now officially called to order, and I will ask for the roll call from Deputy City Clerk Stewart.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga.
Here.
Mayor Protem Eric Singal.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
All present this evening. First up on the agenda is certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have one this evening. C1 is Troy Youth Assistance Annual Report, and that'll be presented by Kristin Meldrum and Sheri Paulus, except that looks like Carl Schmidt. So there he is. It's Carl Schmidt.
Picture taken with her. She's the principal at Hill Elementary.
Oh, of course, of course.
Troop was from her school. So I hurry back. The first one's up.
All right. Is she going to make it? You all right to get started without her?
Yeah, I'll start without her. I know you've got a full agenda tonight, and we're going to tag team anyway. So I want to, as always, when I'm able to speak in front of you, I want to thank you for your constant support of Troy Youth Assistance. I will tell, well, hello. I will tell you that this year has really been a recovery year for Troy Youth Assistance. You know, we, up until, actually even now, we are not, for the most part, our caseworker isn't allowed to meet with kids in person because the county hasn't allowed that yet. So everything has kind of gone to distance-based counseling. And we're seeing, I'll speak from the school district perspective and kind of help you understand how that falls into Troy Youth Assistance. We see in general that demand for social-emotional assistance for our kids is really high. You know, adults that are always at each other's throats lately about everything. We all seem to have a very short fuse, where our children are picking up on that, and it's the same thing. So as they've come back into our classrooms, we're just seeing across every age group more of that kind of, just, I'm going to call it uncertainty, and, you know, an ongoing level of stress that we have to deal with. So at a school district level, we have hired social workers for all of our elementary schools. But what we're finding is that even though we can refer children to services, the services that we try to refer them to are full. They don't have available, so they end up on a waiting list. So that actually puts, so the tie into Troy Youth Assistance is that now puts Troy Youth Assistance in a position where we have to try to recognize that we've got an increased demand. We're seeing our caseload has returned to normal and then some. So I think that the function of Troy Youth Assistance is really valuable. So one of the things that we've been trying to do with Troy Youth Assistance is to make sure that we are aligned really well with the strategic plan of the district.
Yes.
There's my transition to you.
One of the things that we've noticed is that to give the same supports that we were given before the pandemic wouldn't be being responsive to the needs of our students in our community. So we're really trying to make sure that not only are we tying in what our work that we do to the school district, but we're also being responsive to community needs. Our school district has a mission and vision that Troy Youth Assistance wants to be a part of. So we had the superintendent, Dr. Boczewski, come in and talk to all of the board members and give his vision for the district. And now what we're doing is working on making sure that all of our projects and all of our commitments completely align with that. That's something that we haven't done to this extreme in the past, and we're really excited because we think that we will be able to make more of a, we know we'll be able to make more of a difference in the lives of our students and all of their stakeholders.
And I want to give one example of that that we did this year. We used to have youth recognition night, and I emceed it a number of years, and it was generally a chance for us to recognize kids in the community are really going above and beyond and doing some amazing stuff. What we found, though, is that there was this disconnect between the kids who were nominated in that process and our primary focus in terms of the kids that we're trying to help. So last year, we decided instead of doing youth recognition, we replaced that with a thing called boost grants. And boost grants was an opportunity for anybody who had gone through a thing, you know, and they could have been in trouble legally, they could have really struggled personally, could have been a situation at home, and essentially they had demonstrated they may have come off the rails at some point, but at 17, 18, they've now recovered and they're moving forward with something. And this was a chance for us to help kids with things that maybe they wouldn't have access to otherwise. So I think we had 12 kids that we supported. Where Cindy? I was going to say, did I?
She's behind you.
Yeah. Yeah, 12 kids and $12,000. But essentially what we looked for is we looked at youth who, they had to put through an application, someone had to sponsor them. I actually sponsored an 18-year-old who had been living by himself. His mother had been deported, and he was holding down the house by himself, trying to figure out how to do this, graduated from TCCHS after really struggling at Troy High and was, had got a full ride to Michigan State, but needed a computer. You know, he had just the sort of basic things that he didn't have a parent here in the United States to help him with, and he received a computer through the boost grant. So we felt that that was, there's a good example of something where we're trying to realign everything we do to support the kids that need that support. So that's something, so we're still, so that's the first example of that. But again, what Sharie's going to do is really take the group through and identify other areas. So we're going to relook at everything that we do and have done for years on Troy Youth Assistance and say, is that good? Is it meeting our goal? Is there something we can do better? So.
Essentially, the goal is also to be more proactive, not just reactive. We find that students are needing support in secondary, and we're not doing what we need to do in the elementary school to prevent them from being in the program or needing Troy Youth Assistance. And then once they do, what are we doing to make sure that they're celebrated for completing programs or changing things around or whatever the case may be? So we're really just working on making sure that this meets the needs of our community. That's so important to me, and that's so important to all the board members to make sure that we're doing that.
And we obviously couldn't do it without the support of the city. So thank you for all that. So first of all, I want to ask if you have any questions on our annual report, and then I'm going to ask for something else.
Uh oh.
Are there any questions?
Any questions for Rabbi on council? Principal Paulus, did you know your students were going to be here tonight? What a fun surprise, right? That's my only question on that one.
I should have lied and said that I knew.
No, it's okay. I made it.
Are you here for us? She goes, no. Okay. So can we have the slide up or?
Oh.
So I warned you, as the old fart on the executive board, I said, I will come forward and ask for something. I think about three years ago, when I came in front of you and kind of gave you the overview of the annual report, I said, you know, we're doing okay financially. There may be a point in time where I may come back and say, we really could use some more support. And so unfortunately, today is that day for you.
Surprise!
So let me, I just want to talk this through a little bit. We asked our treasurer to put together a financial report, and just to refresh everybody's memory, if you look at historically how the city supported Troy Youth Assistance, pretty much every year, when we went all the way back to 2002, and from 2002 to 2011, we received support of about $35,000 per year on average. Was it, give or take, a couple thousand dollars, but it was averaged around $35,000. Then the Great Recession hit in 2011, and we lost support and, you know, did fundraising for almost five years. And then the city was able to restore $10,000 a year starting in 2014. If you look at our revenues to date, we take the $10,000 from you, and then we typically get somewhere around $5,000 in revenue from other sources that people will donate. And last year is a good example. We had one couple donate $5,000 towards the boost grant funds because they thought it was so important. So it allowed us to hit more people with that. And if you look at our expenses, our expenses are typically running somewhere between $18,000 and $20,000. So what we are, we're here to ask is, I know you're about to move into a lot of your budget work, you know, to try to look at what you can afford to offer. We're hoping that you can boost us to, we need a boost grant. We're hoping you can increase our funding to about $20,000. If you could do that, an extra $10,000, that allows us then to kind of, we know our expenses are going to meet our revenue coming in. We started, when I came on the board 10 years ago, we had, we had about almost $80,000 in assets, and we had purposefully spent that down to about $50,000 because we said, the money's doing nobody any good sitting here. And so we took it down to a level that we want it to be at about two to three years coverage in case of another recession, things like that. So that's still our emergency pot of money. So our thought right now is, we may limit ourselves in terms of additional things we can do. What we're doing right now has been working fine. We can continue to do that, but what it doesn't allow us to do is expand the reach of Troy Youth Assistance in some of the directions that Sharie just alluded to.
We really want it to be a household name. Right now, Troy Youth Assistance is not, not everyone knows about Troy Youth Assistance, and we need this opportunity to allow that to be a household name and provide resources for more students and reach more of our community.
So our thought on this was not to come back and ask for the 35 that we had years ago, but to focus on if you, as a council, can agree to provide us with enough funding to maintain all our current programs, then we can do pilot programming using our asset funds. And if they work and they create a big impact, we may come back to you and say, hey, will you fund another 2,000 for this or whatever? But the idea is to try to free up the remaining funds that we have to expand services. And so we're hoping anything you can get, anything between 10 and getting us close to 20 is going to help us. So whatever, as you look at your budgetary process, I know that I have a lot of experience knowing that there's never enough money from the school district perspective, but we wanted to come and at least present that to you as a request for you to consider.
All right. Well, obviously, we won't commit to anything right here on this spot.
Yes, no, I know.
But is there a consensus to have City Manager Miller at least present us with some options during the budget? We're deep into our budget cycle, right? I mean, keep in mind that, but, you know, of course, I mean, is that, is there a consensus for that?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, well, we appreciate it.
It's a, obviously TY is a big valuable asset in our community, right? So we're happy to do what we have been doing. We'll talk about the future, but you guys are doing great work, and I love that you're revamping and looking and finding the best way to help the most in need, right?
Okay, great. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good to see you both.
Nice to see you too.
That concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations. There are no carryover items this evening. Up next are public hearings. We do have one this evening. E1 is a conditional rezoning, CRJPLN 2021-001. Proposed Pine View condominiums, west side of Dequinder, north of Long Lake, Sidwell Number 88-20-12-476-070, Section 12, from NN Neighborhood Node J and EP Environmental Protection to NN Neighborhood Node J. And I see Mr. Savadon has come forward, turned out all the lights, so must have a presentation for us.
My vanity doesn't allow me to wear my glasses at public meetings, so I dim the lights so he can see better. I think the audience can as well, so it's a win-win.
Well, as long as somebody can see.
Good evening, Mayor Baker and the City Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you for introducing the item. Before I get too far into it, I want to, before I forget as well, Sarah Merrill is here from OHM Advisors. She is a traffic engineer, and she was invited to attend this evening to address any traffic issues or answer any questions that you may have regarding traffic. So. No?
And Brent, will the applicant be speaking tonight as well? Or just for questions?
I believe the applicant will be available to answer any questions.
Just checking. Thank you.
Thank you Scott. So the site, you're all aware of the site. This is the second time that it's been on the city council agenda, but it's almost two and a half acres in size. It's presently vacant. And there's a, the issue, the rezoning we're talking about tonight is this 40-foot wide strip of property that's presently zoned EP Environmental Protection. And the petitioners before us this evening to rezonate to allow for it to be used for additional landscaping as well as 10 guest parking spaces. But how do we get here tonight? So on November 12, 2019, there was a site plan that went before the Planning Commission for the same number of units, 25, same number of stories, three, and this item was considered by the Planning Commission, similar layout as well. The Planning Commission was generally in favor of the application, but at the meeting, the applicant noted, mentioned that there was a desire to add guest parking spaces and sidewalk to the EP, which is not permitted. So there was some back and forth. The Planning Commission basically agreed that it would provide for a better quality development if that, if those elements were able to be put in that 40-foot wide area. So they postponed the site plan application to allow the developer ample time to consider all the opinions and ideas expressed by the commission. And along came COVID, and it's been ample time because it was considered in 2019, and we're into 2022. But keep in mind, we weren't, the Planning Commission didn't hold a public hearing for a year. So that helps explain, you know, why it's taken so long. But in the meantime, the applicant did submit a conditional rezoning application to rezonate that piece. So here's the layout. Again, the 40, this is a demarcation line here in purple of the EP district. They're proposing parking spaces as well as this sidewalk. Townhomes are permitted in the neighborhood node districts, and again, same number of units as a site plan, 25. There is, there is a shared access drive. This is existing here, and it's shared with Taco Bell, and with, which is, connects to Dequinder Road to the east. There's a number of voluntary conditions that have been offered, as we all know, for conditional rezonings. It's not a, it's not a negotiation. It's not a back and forth. Conditions have to be voluntarily offered by the petitioner. I'm not going to read all these conditions, but just to hit on a couple of them. Voluntarily restricting the density, the number of units to 25, restricting the height to three stories, and each, you know, would have a two-car garage. This is all in your packet. Setbacks in heights comply with all neighborhood node requirements. With the, I must stipulate, though, that when, at the time this was submitted, the, this met the maximum height requirement. Since this has been considered, the zoning ordinance was amended to restrict the height to two and a half stories, 30 feet. So this exceeds the maximum height requirement today, but it was submitted prior to that text amendment. So there's a couple balls in the air here. It's just a, it's a, it's a unique application. The applicant proposes a six-foot fence along the southern boundary in lieu of required landscaping, and that's to shield this development from the businesses that are located to the south. The engineering department had some concerns they wanted to, the applicant, to address. It involves sidewalk connectivity and involving extending the sidewalk and adding some pavement markings. These types of concerns are typical to final site plan approval. These will be able to be addressed in final site plan approval, like similar applications. It's very common for the details to get ironed out during the final engineering stage. These are the proposed elevations. There's the front elevation, the front doors. These materials are voluntarily offered. They include asphalt shingles, wood trim, board and batten siding, and brick veneer. And if you have any questions about the materials, again, Mr. Abbott there is here, he can talk about those. Here's a rendering of the potential, proposed unit. I'm not going to read these. You've seen conditional rezoning applications in the past, and these are the standards that need to be met. They're in Section 1604C3. So the Planning Commission considered this application on August 24, 2021. There was a motion recommending approval that was 4-4. There was a motion then recommending denial that was 4-4. So there was no thumbs up or thumbs down. It was like thumb this way, which is very, kind of uncommon. It was scheduled for a public hearing on September 22. The applicant requested removal from that agenda to go back to the Planning Commission to get an actual recommendation that wasn't a tie vote. So on October 26, went back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommended approval 7 to 2. And there were a number of recommendations that were made, submitting photometric plans, addressing the sidewalk concerns I mentioned earlier, verifying site landscaping calculations, indicating siding material, which has been clarified, providing a conditional rezoning agreement, which was done, it's in your packet, and stipulating that the barrier along the southern property line be provided in lieu of landscaping. So all of these recommendations were either met or will be met, can easily be met during final site plan approval. So the planning department finds that the project meets the node standard set forth in Section 5.06E, as well as a conditional rezoning standard set forth in Section 16.04C, and the planning department recommends approval of the application. And I can answer any questions you may have. And again, if there's traffic-related questions, Sarah is here.
Thank you, Mr. Savadon. Questions from council at this point? Either for Mr. Abbottera or Traffic or Mr. Savadon? Mr. Hamilton, it's her name, but Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, for your presentation. My question is, does the motion as written in the agenda include all those stipulations that the Planning Commission wanted to add, like one or two slides before this?
I don't believe it does.
Okay, so can we, can we, when we move this, can we add all those, say, move it as approved by the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I don't, I believe you can. I don't have any heartburn over it, but I will defer to Julie DeFrain.
Yep.
So it's a little, it's a little bit of a gray area because this is a conditional rezoning. What Mr. Savadon explained is these things, all things are already done at the final site plan review. Everything else, all of the voluntary conditions that Mr. Abbottera has offered are already incorporated into the conditional rezoning review that was in your packet.
Okay, that's fine. I'll, that's fine.
Additional questions? Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe it was when this development went to Planning Commission, I think it was the second time, was it, was it August? I'm losing all the dates. When they talked about a resolution, and I know that was when it was kind of a stalemate essentially, but there seemed to be consensus that they wanted the applicant to look more into traffic safety. That was a concern. And so, and that is something that I've been, I've been looking into as well, and I'm not sure what the answer is. But it's interesting, as I listened to Planning Commission meetings, some of what was being talked about with traffic safety was a little different than what I observed as I went out there. And I don't know if your traffic specialist can speak to that, or if there's anything that could be done, is what I've experienced is when you're going north on Dequinder to turn in there, you get in the left turn lane, and they have folks coming south, and they're trying to turn into Kroger, that's where people almost run into each other. Like, I almost got into an accident with my six-year-old trying to do that. And I know that the data shows there's only been two accidents a year, not that bad. I don't know how many almost accidents there have been, but I don't know what your traffic expert might say to that, just because you have, you have to turn left in here and turn left from folks coming here into the Kroger, super, super complex, and that's kind of where things are bottlenecking. And so I don't know if there's any, I don't know what the answer or what, but just would love to hear from the traffic specialist on that.
I will step aside and let her answer your question.
Hi, I'm Sarah Merrill with OHM. Yeah, absolutely. The left turn lane, where you've got lots of driveways kind of in close proximity, lots of vehicles that get in those driveways to turn, that is a natural thing that happens where, you know, kind of the potential for, you know, head-on crash occurs or left turn conflict. The traditional ways to mitigate that are to try and get more law enforcement out there so we can identify that as a priority area if we start seeing crashes or if there's a lot of near misses where people are reporting those, and the police can come out there, kind of observe it. One of the things that, you know, as a driver, you know, you're not supposed to drive in the left turn lane. You get over right before you need to make your turn. So if law enforcement are out there and witnessing it, they can kind of issue warnings or citations if needed to discourage and dissuade that behavior from happening if people are staying in that turn lane and driving any length of time. If crashes start to happen there that, you know, are attributed to that pattern, one of the things that can be done is to prohibit left turn in one or either, both driveways. The crash history that I've seen, there's not a lot of evidence of head-on left turn crashes in that center turn lane. So near misses obviously wouldn't have a police report to go with that, but that's one thing that can be done if crashes are occurring.
Thank you.
Additional questions from council? Councilmember Abraham.
Thank you, Mayor. Understanding the 2019 plan, which kept the EP zone free from development, how different is it in terms of where the buildings are located in that two-acre property? Is it very different, or is the main difference between 2019 and this plan, the sidewalk and the guest parking, and that's essentially it?
That's the latter.
Okay.
It's very, it's very similar.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, I'm going to ask a follow-up on that just because we're on, can you discuss why it's zoned environmentally protected? I mean, it doesn't see, I was there today. It doesn't look like wetlands or trees or wildlife or anything but some weeds, frankly. So I, just curious what the, why it was zoned that way?
There's a, there's a history in Troy that EP district, the EP district was used as kind of a line in the sand to demarcate the boundary of a, like a commercial or an office or a non-residential use with a single-family residential zoning district. That EP district was used, was used as a, as a 40-foot buffer. As you indicated, there's not much there. That was before we had the tool, ironically enough, of conditional rezoning, where a developer could recognize the potential impacts of the rezoning and can voluntarily offer something like a wall or landscaping or distance or a combination of all those to mitigate the secondary impacts of the rezoning. So that was 20 years before we had the tool of conditional rezoning.
So is it safe to say if we were doing a new zoning map today, would that still be, that land be classified as environmentally protected if we were, I mean, there's nothing that's actually being protected from an environmental standpoint. Is that correct?
That's correct. It was, it was a carryover. That EP district was, was created, I've been, I've been here almost 20 years. It was created before, I believe it was created before I got there, or not long after I got here, but it was in existence before we did the comprehensive rewrite of the zoning ordinance in 2011, and we kept it. It's not, it's not a tool that, I don't think it's appropriate to use that tool for that purpose, because as you indicated, it's 40-foot swath with nothing there, and it's difficult to make an argument that it's environmentally protected. What are you protecting? Now, the residential neighbor to the north would probably think, probably say that that 40 feet's important. So I understand, I understand that, but I think that it's, to refer to it as environmental protection is just kind of confusing.
And just to clarify, there's no, you can't plant trees on a, you can't do a landscaping buffer if it's zoned EP?
Trees could be planted in.
Trees can be planted.
Yes.
It's the parking that's at issue more than anything.
Correct, and the sidewalk.
And the sidewalk. But trees can be.
Yeah.
Other questions? Because I have another one, too. Councilmember Hamilton?
And just to clarify, by right, the NNJ zoning would allow office development, which
Other questions, because I have another one, too? Councilmember Hamilton?
And just to clarify, by right, the NNJ zoning would allow office development, which the traffic study showed would have substantially higher traffic than this option.
Yeah, and OHM prepared that memo, and I thought it was important to, you know, 25 unit, and again, for a resident who lives next to it, I totally understand the concern about the cars, I mean, obviously. But I thought it was, it was important to provide a comparison of what could also be developed there by right. Now, the office market, we all know, is in a bit of a shambles right now, but having said that, everyone still needs doctors, and Beaumont is two miles up the road. So, I don't think it's a, it's beyond the realm of possibility to have a 20,000-square-foot medical office building there. I think it's a, it's a very attractive site for that reason, they don't need exposure, because, you know, it's potentially everyone would be referred to that, to that site. So, from an impact standard, an impact perspective, 25 units is, has less impact in terms of traffic than a 20,000-square-foot office, which would fit on that property.
And, you know, right now, office is out of favor, but things change real quick, as we know, so.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
I'll be really quick. Director Sabatana, from a development perspective, what other sort of multifamily housing forms could potentially be there? I know it's not a large lot, and these are row homes, townhouses essentially, are there other sort of, if you call them housing forms, that could fit?
Absolutely, this, this form seems to be the most popular form with our development community in terms of multifamily, but stacked ranches, fourplexes, there's a wide range of different housing options that would be buildable on this site. This is the option that we're processing, because it was the one that was submitted. But yes, there are others that are, that will be permitted.
And a quick question, if it was like a stacked, a fourplex or duplex, those would be less dense, I presume, than what we have?
Potentially.
Councilmember Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. This rezon, or conditional rezoned is a little bit different, in the sense that I don't think we've ever had a development that shared a driveway with a private business. And so, perhaps this question might be more for, from Ms. DeFrain, you know, should the ownership of Taco Bell change, or that property changes hands, does that relationship of being able to share that driveway, is there perpetuity to it, where it would go to the new owner, should the?
Right, I'm assuming that whatever agreement that is in place, and maybe Mr. Abbottera can speak to it, whatever agreement is for that shared drive would be something that's in perpetuity, or addressed in those, in those documents. I'll be honest, I have not reviewed those documents, but in terms of, maybe this is part of your question, in terms of sharing that drive, I mean, that's something that may be unusual, but it's maybe, it's not completely unusual, I mean.
It's not typical, but it's not uncommon.
Right.
Okay.
And the normal process, the, during final site plan approval, which is administrative, we're supposed, supposed to ensure that the proper easements are in place for perpetuity. Now, like Mr. DeFrain said, we didn't check that out before the meeting.
But it obviously would be.
It's supposed to be.
Final approval would be given. Okay. Additional questions? Any questions for Mr. Abbottera? Go ahead.
I do have a question. Just wanted to ask the applicant, kind of, to explain more about the choice of the townhouses, as opposed to other multifamily housing options.
Good evening, I'm Gary Abbottera. I just, I looked at the three-story townhomes at the time, that's what I wanted to build and put up there. I've seen them on Big Beaver and Kilmer, and I think they look very nice, or a nice unit, and that's, that's the unit I'm looking for. I don't have an answer of, I want to put single ranches in there, I can't put homes in there, but I want to put that in there. Do I have a few minutes to?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Haven't been up to city council in years, and all new faces up here, but I've been a Troy resident, building in the city for 35 years. I've been a member on the Building Code Board of Appeals here, I volunteer my time in the city, I'm very active, I have three kids that went to Troy High Schools, I was active in there, and I've built probably 350 homes in the city now, and I'd heard some people don't even know who I am, but I like it that way, I like to be under the radar, you don't cause problems, people don't know who you are, and you can sell homes. So, I've had this project for a while, and as Brent said, 2019, we came in here, and there was three or four different issues that the Planning Commission had, their first meeting. First one was, they didn't like the way the sidewalks went between the units, so we were no problem, can fix that. The next county, the next planning commissioner didn't like the coloring scheme, I thought it looked for old people instead of young people, because I'm looking for the younger people, as they just get married and want to move into it, so I said that. And then, Mrs. Cruz said, she goes, quote, "Gary, you need to step up your game," and she goes, "That EP zoning needs to go, and you need to put something in there." So, I, I've been doing what I've been doing, I listened to the Planning Commission, they tell me what they want, and that's what I come back with, so I listened to her, and I asked all the other planners, "Are you guys good with me coming back with a different plan?" And two of them said, "As long as you don't add more units." And I said, "I'm fine with that, I don't need to add units, I'll come back in." Then COVID hit, as Brent said, and then all the issues, and then I came back, two new plan, planning commissioners came in, two left, and at the first meeting, it was a 4-4, two of them had flipped, and one was worried about traffic. So, I came back a month, I was going to come to council, we pulled it back, so we could either, I wanted a definite yes, or a definite no. So, we came back, and it was then 7 to 2 in favor of it. So, the planning commissioner who had the traffic issue, she was satisfied with it, and we went through it 7-2, and that's how I got here today. Your question, I'm not sure you asked it about the cross-access easements, is there are cross-access easements for Taco Bell and my project. So, if Taco Bell goes away, the access will still stay there, there's nothing that can change that in there. There's one more thing, if you could pull up the, do you have a day-to-day area on it? Want to show the Taco Bell?
The aerial?
Yeah. Is there? All right. Yeah, that one right there. No, that one right there, if you look at the south end of Taco Bell, their driveway goes into 41069 for future development. Do you see that there? If you look at the Taco Bell parking lot?
I'd point to it with the red, you could.
Right there.
Yeah.
So, the planners were planning, I imagine someday, when 41069 gets torn down the corner, that entrance at Taco Bell would probably access that whole area there, so that they get rid of curb cuts, because right now, there's another curb cut right here, and there's another one right here, and there's one back over here. Someday, if these buildings go away, which seems to happen a lot, the traffic will probably come in from here, drive through there, come out here, and drive out through here, so that they can eliminate similar traffic issues. The problem is, right now, you know, nobody's bought this building yet, this was the old Taco Bell right here, which is up for sale, and this corner's going to go for sale someday, because this is a very valuable corner, with, I think, DeQuinder has, if you could ask, I think, just 40,000 or 50,000 cars a day that drive by it, so you know a big developer's going to buy it and put something in there, which then will eliminate two curb cuts, which makes traffic coming in here, and over here, is my assumption, because of that access coming in from right here. That was just one thing that I was, wanted to bring up for, for traffic reasons. And then, if you do go back, you know, if you look at it, is, we were always building in this area here, this EP zoning up here, was for the meandering walkway, which I, could be a gray area, might be allowed in EP, may not be, and then the parking spots that the planning commissioners wanted me to put in there for guest parking. And if, like I say, if I didn't want to do the guest parking, I would have just been at the Planning Commission two years ago, and I'd be probably complete with the project that, instead of being where I'm at now. Is there any questions I can answer for anybody?
Additional questions? Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Thank you, Mayor, just really quick, that guest parking, those 10 spaces, those are the only 10 spaces available for guest parking, is that right? There's no other guest parking on?
There was guest parking, there was four or five spots that were on the side, that we got rid of to put them over there, to open up the area.
Okay, so there were?
Yes, there were guest parking spots. By putting the guest parking in there, it's not benefiting me, so to say, it's the people that are buying my unit someday, that are going to have the parking spots, you know, whether we have it or don't, I don't know what it'll be in five years, or the people will just park on the grass sometime, but that would, that's about the, the end of that. Anybody else?
Additional questions? Councilmember Hoderick?
Thank you for being here tonight, and coming up to answer questions, and for the background, Mr. Sabatana as well. You know, we all have our roles in this process, and ours is to represent our fellow residents as best we can, and look and feel in your residents, so you understand what we're talking about in terms of the traffic safety there, and how we all kind of take a deep breath, and frankly, hyperventilate a little bit, because of the health and safety aspect of our decision-making. And that is a crazy corner. It definitely is a crazy corner, it's a crazy corner with, without this project there. Now, the fact of the matter is, is you are a property owner, you have rights to develop that property. If we were to say no tonight to this, other options would be, just clarifying some of what came out, office buildings, or, and I think Mr. Sabatana's projection of an idea of medical office building, that's exactly what had come to my mind, which, I'm hearing people say, there's a lot more traffic that's involved with that, than what we're talking about with the density of this project, correct?
Correct.
Yes, that was some of the clarification. And you know, as laypeople, I assume the opposite. You know, I'm thinking numbers of people, I think residents watching us deliberate over this might assume the opposite as well, that when we put residential units in there, we're talking about additional parking, gee, that's bringing more traffic, when in fact, this is probably, from a traffic perspective, one of our best options. Yes, is that correct?
I say yes.
Can you come up to the mic, because we got to hear it?
This is truly at the crux of, you know, the anxiety about this, that we, well, I shouldn't speak for all of council, but I think that we feel when we're, when we're entertaining these ideas, and I know you understand that as the applicant, so help us, I know it's hard to predict what could go there.
Absolutely.
But, help us.
As a residential development, residential generates significantly less new traffic, new trips, than a lot of other uses. It's significantly less than general office, and medical office generates even more than a general office would, so quite substantially less. To put it in perspective, the Taco Bell would be expected to generate about 100 vehicle trips in the peak hour, like a one-hour rush hour time period. The residential development, we're talking about a dozen trips, and that's, you know, coming in and going out, total. So, this is a not very intense use, in terms of traffic. If it were a medical office, we'd probably be looking in the realm of 40 vehicles in the peak hour, could vary a little bit depending on the size. The general office was a little bit less, kind of in between those two.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? Is that generally because, this is my, my laypeople thought, is it because office or medical becomes a regional draw, whereas residential, it's just the people who live there that go there? I mean, is that generally the concept? Because that's how I picture it, and I may be wrong, but.
Largely, I mean, residential, you still get service people coming in. You've got the mail truck that comes in, the garbage truck, your Amazon deliveries, all of those vehicles coming in, you know, yard maintenance company, those sorts of things. Whereas a business, when you think about going to your doctor's office, for example, you're going, you're there for an hour, and then you leave, and they've got appointments booked, you know, every 15, 20, 30 minutes, so you've got a lot more turnover. In a residential situation, you're coming, you're staying there for a length of time, so the number of trips coming in and out is far less. You might come in, you know, hang out for the day, drop your kids at school, come back, you're not, you know, every half hour, coming and going, and that's where the big difference is.
Can I ask another question about the enforcement aspect of that? That's our border, between counties, between cities, it's not a city of Troy necessarily alone problem, it's also not a Mr. Abbottera problem, he's not responsible for keeping traffic from turning into all sorts of locations, but, and I don't know if it's fair to ask someone, I don't want anyone on the spot, but conceptually, is there, can we enforce that as well as we need to, or does it need to be a joint agreement? I mean, I, I don't think there's traffic calming measures that can be taken otherwise in the middle of that major road, especially because of the county, the cities, and I just, I'm curious a little bit about that, if possible.
Well, I think I understand your question, but not totally, but if you're asking, can the police department go out there and enforce the laws, traffic laws, the obvious question is yes, and in fact, we have traffic safety units dedicated for things like that. So, it is not unusual for our police department to have an area which is identified as a problem, to put, not just enforcement, I mean, a closer look at what's going on at a specific location. Chief, I hope I answered that correctly? Okay.
I guess, part of my question was my own answer, we can't just go out there and say, "Hey, you can't turn left here anymore, because it's not our road and our road alone." I guess that's my clarifying question?
Okay.
Is that right? And that's correct?
Well, and Sarah probably can answer better than I, how a traffic movement change would occur, and Sarah, feel free to answer that if you want, because it's not a simple situation to have like a no-left turn.
Correct, that would be done in conjunction with a traffic study, working with the maintaining agency, in this case, the Road Commission. The criteria in order to get turns prohibited, you're looking at, in general, I've documented safety problem, you know, a substantial history of crashes, we're not seeing that based on the data, we pulled data going back about the last 15 years, which was when Taco Bell opened, and then we looked back as a comparison before Taco Bell opened, taking a look and seeing, you know, did crashes go up substantially, or is it in proportion to the amount that traffic has gone up? Because volumes have gone up pretty substantially in Troy over the last 20 years as well. In this particular area, we've seen more crashes actually at the driveway just south of here, kind of opposite that Kroger and Strip Center on the other side of the road. Yeah, so, you know, there's a couple crashes in the vicinity of the Taco Bell driveway. Over a timeframe like that, that's not unexpected. There's more of a crash concentration, a cluster of them, near that Kroger driveway, and then, you know, as we get closer to the signalized intersection, we see a ton more crashes, which is also typical.
And I also know there's unintended consequences of changing traffic patterns, and residents in one part of town may not like that they can't turn left in there anymore, but I just, I think the health, safety aspect of the traffic is important for us to discuss, and certainly is on our radars this evening. Did you have a mayor for town, Eric Segal?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If I'm understanding correctly, it sounds like the traffic problem there isn't about whether we have a residential development there or not, it's about people coming in and out, the Krogers, which is in Sterling Heights, over which we have very low control, and the Taco Bell on our side. That's really where the traffic issues, these crashes, or near crashes, and so forth, are all the left turns out of those two areas.
So, most of the crashes on DeQuinder, I looked at a 200-foot radius, right around the Taco Bell driveway. Most of the crashes in the last 15 years there are actually not driveway-related, most of them are just traffic on DeQuinder, you know, somebody changes lanes, sideswipes somebody else, those sorts of things, that aren't really related. There's some rear ends, kind of residual backups from the traffic signal, or cars turning in and out of other driveways. Most of, most of the crashes are not related to the Taco Bell driveway specifically.
Mayor?
Say it, man.
Could I ask Sarah to sort of talk a little bit about how we try to reduce the number of driveways, and then not have driveways near the intersection, that kind of?
Sure.
Improves circulation?
Absolutely. You may have heard the term access management, I think I heard Brent or Mr. Abbottera mention it earlier, access management, we're trying to consolidate driveways, limit the number of driveways. The more driveways, the more conflict points, you know, the more vehicles turning in and out, the more changes in speed, the more unexpected potential for vehicles to be making maneuvers. So, the city of Troy, the Road Commission, they worked together to limit the number of driveways along just about every road in, in the county. What we're looking at doing is, when you've got a driveway on one side of the road, the driveway on the other side of the road, ideally, we're aligning them, if they can't be aligned, we're trying to keep them far enough separated, that those turning movements aren't in conflict with each other. You know, a vehicle turning out one driveway, isn't going to have a vehicle turning out the other. We are constrained by property boundaries, right? Sometimes there's only so much we can do. When it's possible, we're trying to provide cross-access, so instead of giving a new driveway, we're sharing driveways. That's where we get these cross-access agreements, shared access agreements, all with the purpose of. of limiting the number of driveways and conflict points.
Mayor Protem Erickson-Galt, do you have another question?
Yeah, the other thing, and I, you know, I've lived in that area for 18 years and my family has frequented that Taco Bell way too much. And now the new Kroger there. And my, it's very enlightening to hear that it's really not about the left turn so much as just the regular traffic on Dequender, which kind of defies my observations because it always seems like all the people turning, especially out of that Kroger, is just kind of crazy there. But my other question was, oh, the backups at the Taco Bell, and this seems to be a post-COVID thing because it's only drive-through now. It seems like every time I go past there, the traffic is practically backed up onto Dequender waiting for the drive-through. Is that just my occasional, you know, hypothetical observation or is that really an issue there?
I have not seen that. I have not driven by this Taco Bell in quite some time, so I can't speak to that. You know, if that's happening, one of the things that, you know, this site getting developed has a potential to improve that because they're going to extend that driveway, build that median there. So, you know, potentially, you could get vehicles that, you know, will kind of loop around more into the residential to back up instead of out to the main road. But that's just speculation.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a follow-up on that one really quick. So the median on that driveway that's not the picture that's up there now, how, this is maybe a Brent question. Yeah, how, where, how does that affect the Taco Bell? So it doesn't, it wouldn't necessarily stop them from just still backing up to Dequender, but then they'd be blocking the access to the residential? Is that, is that right? If there's backup from the drive-through that is going onto Dequender now?
So it depends how drivers behave, if they want to play nice or not. In order to enter the Taco Bell drive, they do not have to loop through, you know, kind of to the left of the Taco Bell drive. They can turn right in. I guess it'd be a turn left in, but turn directly in. If Taco Bell is kind of wrapped all around the site with drive-through and they're not able to mitigate that using cones and things like that on their site, just like you'd see with other developments, then you could have vehicles that kind of turn and then do a U-turn and kind of start queuing or stacking on that driveway. I am not sure offhand how wide it is. I believe it's wide enough you could get two cars kind of side by side in the divided portion, but it's not a guarantee.
You know, that's probably beyond the questions you should be having to answer. So I appreciate that. Additional questions? Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, I'm so grateful you're here tonight. This is really enlightening. And this question, I presume I know the answer, but you know, just want to hear it from you as the expert. So as I asked Dr. Savedant, like, you know, what are other, you know, potential multifamily that could be there? Because I get it, like, if it, by right, you can have office, commercial spacer, and that would generate more traffic than what we're, the current plan that we have here. So with like a duplex stacked ranches, fourplexes, if they're less dense, I would presume then you would have less people and less traffic inside-out. Is that true?
Correct. So a single family, like detached single family, actually generates more traffic per dwelling unit than multifamily development. A lot of that is driven, again, by all those auxiliary, you know, landscape, you know, snow removal, you know, pet walkers, delivery trucks, all of those things, when you've got individual units are generating more traffic, more trips. Whereas if you've got a multifamily like this, you've got one lawn company coming in and doing everybody all at the same time. So you see a reduction in trips.
Any other? Councilmember Hodorick.
And I don't know if anyone can fairly answer this question. It's not a traffic question.
You may be seated.
Give the poor person a break. But the townhomes that are being built, there have been no issues with selling these in the city, the newer developments that have gone in, as far as I can tell. Is that part of the reason you picked this?
So...
The market supported it for you?
Market supports it. Two miles from Beaumont Hospital, I'm going to be getting a lot of people that work there that want to move over here. And let's face it, everybody wants to move into our city. I think we get the best city in the state of Michigan. And home sales prove it. I mean, everybody's buying up every piece of property that's in Troy because everybody wants to move into our city. Our property values are going up, our home values are going up. My least expensive home in the city of Troy now is $750,000 starting price. So when I'm at $350,000 for these, it's a bargain for the young person. And we want young people to move into our city. There's no doubt about it. I mean, I'm almost 60 now, so I'm not contributing as much to the city as I used to, but the young people, we need to come into our city to keep our city going. So that's a very important thing right there. And these are affordable housing. And I have three kids that are looking for houses. My one daughter, she moved down to Hazel Park because it's affordable down there. And my other one, you know, is looking here and the other one doesn't want to leave home. So, you know, but we need affordable housing for young people. And I'm not going to climb up and down three sets of steps, but the young people, they just boop, 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 they bounce up and like nothing. On the first floor with the garages, we have a home office and everybody's working from home right now. How long it'll last with gas prices, probably a lot longer than we think. And they're using it for the home office and upstairs for living up there. So there are, I don't know, 250 of these units in the city already and they're sold and the people are all happy with them, you know? And I listen to all the feeds, people are like, we don't need this, we don't need that. But they don't realize that people that bought them, that's their home and they love them. And that's what they want. And we're giving them what the people want. They either want the big monster houses like we build that are four-bedroom family houses or they want the condo that they can move into. I did want to elaborate on one more thing is every development I do, I walk around and I talk to all the neighbors. And I talk to all the neighbors on this side and on this side here. This is one lady, her name is Pam, she's in the audience today. We talked about possibly buying her property and we couldn't come to a price. I did not talk to Taco Bell or RVs or this place here, but this homeowner right here, he's in favor. He wrote a letter at the planning commission that he thinks it's a great project. The other people, I give them a plan, I talk to them and they usually don't come once they know what's going on and explain to them what there is. So I'm very proactive on talking to all the neighbors. I always talk to them before I come to a meeting. And then one last thing about your question is, it seems like all our big traffic problems in our city have to do with Krogers. Everybody's pulling into Krogers all the time. And I go to all of them. This one here, John Arm Big Beaver, everything. Long Lake and Livernoy, same thing. I mean, cars come both ways, they're turning in and parking lots are narrow and, and the last one is Nino Savagio's. If you go there, it's the same way coming off Rochester Road. You want to make a left, someone wants to make a left into Starbucks. It's, you just have to be patient as you pull in and do it. And then, as we talked about the last thing, the traffic is already there. Taco Bell already has all their people coming in regardless, Kroger across the street. I feel with mine, I'm putting less density and less cars in there, as the traffic study says. You know, if I put an office building in there, we're going to have more cars there. Something is going to go there and I think our 25 units is a very good fit in there. If there's any other questions?
Any further questions before I open the public hearing?
One thing is, can I, if I need to, can I talk after the public meeting? After the public hearing?
Uh...
If there's any...
I think so.
Okay.
If there's additional questions or, yeah, yes.
Thank you.
All right, sorry. Trick question. All right, well, I'll open the public hearing. Hasn't anybody actually signed up to speak, but that doesn't prohibit anyone in the audience from speaking this evening. Please come forward, state your name. You know, you have three minutes. Green light will go on when it starts, yellow light when you have one minute left and red light means your time is up.
Hi, everybody. I am Pamela Pruitt and I live at 41203. You ask about the environmental, it was because of me. I stood here before the council when they built Taco Bell and I thought they would build businesses back there. So the council was kind enough to make sure and ensure that all of the residents on the north side would have that buffer. So I'm very happy for residents to be put there. I think they're a little much, little big. I've lived there since '79. And I think Troy is, the development on '19 is just horrible to drive by. The big three-story buildings right up on the road and it's just becoming a sardine city. Pack them in as best as you can. I loved when I moved here. There were horses going up and down on Dequender. It was beautiful. I understand things must be developed, but you also have to respect the residents. And honestly, I mean, you know, I would love the police to come by a whole lot because all hours of the night, I have boom, boom, boom. Thank you for looking into the traffic. It is horrible. They're lined up out to Dequender. Tonight, I, when I had to go out before the meeting, when I came back, I had to drive down and come around because they're all driving down to turn into Kroger. You are right, it is Kroger. I know it is. But, you know, I just want it safe and I just don't feel safe here anymore. So I think it should be a residence. I'm not happy about putting parking spaces where the Troy promised, the council promised me it would be EP. But, you know, you guys are going to do what you're going to do. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pruitt. Appreciate that. Any additional speakers for the public hearing this evening? I will close the public hearing then. I don't suppose City Manager Miller or Mr. Dufresne, we have any, is there any information available as to when that EP strip was put in that you can provide us at this point and how that process went?
Well, I could find out, but it would take some time. I mean, I don't know right this moment.
Okay.
But, you know, it has to be there well over 15, 20 years because it was a tool that was utilized by the previous planning director before I was planning director.
Okay.
I want to say it was established in the early 2000s, but I can look into that.
Okay. It just, it came up, so I thought I'd ask. Someone like to move a resolution to have further discussion? Mayor Protem Erickson-Galt.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move E1A resolution to approve conditional rezoning CRJPLN 2021-001, proposed Pine View condominiums, west side of Dequender, north of Long Lake, Sidwell, number 88-20-12-476-070, Section 12, from NN Neighborhood J, and EP Environmental Protection to NN Neighborhood Node J.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Erickson-Galt, supported by Councilmember Abraham, that we approve E1A resolution to approve conditional rezoning CRJPLN 2021-001, proposed Pine View condominiums, west side of Dequender, north of Long Lake, Sidwell, number 88-20-12-476-070, Section 12, from NN Neighborhood J, and EP Environmental Protection to NN Neighborhood Node J. A discussion? Without a hand or any point? Mayor Protem Erickson-Galt.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm moving to approve and will support this. I'm definitely, like my fellow council member, Chamberlain Kranga, I'm very concerned about traffic, but I'm comforted to hear that this development itself is not likely to contribute to the traffic, that the traffic problem that's there will still be there, but it won't be exacerbated by this residential development. I'm a little concerned about the height of the buildings, but I understand that that's totally within the requirements of what the neighborhood nodes allowed when the applicant made that. And I don't feel that it's our position to try to retroactively try to change those situations, even if we could. I'm comforted that if I read it correctly, that there are, it's going to be significant tree preservation and/or replacement, which I think is very important to our existing residents in Troy. They continually tell us how much they want to preserve green space. It looks, from what I'm seeing here, that this proposal would definitely preserve what existing green space is there or even maybe make it better. I know right along that driveway where the Taco Bell is, there's a lot of not particularly attractive sort of brush and so forth. And it would be nice to have that cleared out and some nice new landscaping put in. And I also, in keeping with your comment, Ms. Pruitt, I, we do hear from people that people are not as thrilled with having these townhouses right up against the road. I like the fact that these are set back from the road into the neighborhood. I think that will definitely make them more palatable to the neighborhood in terms of not giving that sort of feeling of cramming things right up against the road. So I'm going to, I will be voting to approve this.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Erickson-Galt. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is my first neighborhood node, essentially site plan decision, a development. So actually, I put a lot of time into this. I've been out to the site multiple times. That's where I had the run-in with the traffic there and I was there this weekend. And I recognize that being a rezone, a conditional rezone, that there's two things at play. We're both talking about rezoning EP into neighborhood node along with the rest of the neighborhood node. And then because of the condition, the site plan, if we rezone, it is approved. So there are those two components. So I'm going to start with the first, with the rezone. Initially, yes, when you go out there, that EP land, it looks like, it's just part of the field. So it doesn't seem to be different. And so my initial reaction is, it doesn't, yes, seem to have that environmental kind of special, unique kind of value. It was created as a buffer. But hearing Ms. Pruitt say that there was essentially sort of a promise from a former council and there was sort of a discussion between a resident and an elected body that, you know, I can't help but to take that into consideration in some way. So I'm a little bit kind of torn on that component of the decision, that rezone, because I recognize, and then hearing that actually the original plan, there was guest parking in other areas. So it's not as if there couldn't be some other options potentially there. But where I want to focus, and most of my kind of deliberations, is around the site plan because that's where I've had, I think, the most questions. And to be honest, I took advice, this is from a fellow council member, is when you make these decisions, go out, step on the land and imagine, do you see this project there? Pull up your phone and look at it, you know, as you're standing in the middle of that field. And that's what I did with my son, actually, yesterday. And a couple of things, a couple of things struck me as I did that. So first of all, you know, as I looked around at the properties to the west, those are mostly ranches, maybe exceptional one, mostly ranches. To the north property line, as Ms. Pruitt, you know, you know those homes in your own, mostly ranches, so one story. And then if you look at the, you know, the RVs, the Taco Bell, the commercial, there's office, those are all one story around there. And I understand the applicant, you know, this is three stories and I understand the applicant put this forward, starting in 2019, so you're not bound by our amendment to the zoning ordinance to put it down to two and a half. So I understand that. Still, though, when I look around at ranch and one-story housing and commercial, I can't help but to feel that a three-story just seems very large. And it seems, and I know it's not on the corner, it's, you know, it's backed, you know, it's kind of, it's enclosed there, but still, there are homes surrounding that. So that's a consideration. And I would, I would love that to be more two and a half stories. And so that's where then it comes to then building form, asking about, you know, what other multifamily housing could be there that would not be three stories. And, you know, Director Savedant, you know, talked about, you could fit like a fourplex stacked ranch, you know, I wonder duplex in there. And that, in my mind, that seems to have more compatibility with the homes that are around there and the commercial and office that is around there than something that's going to stand up very prominently. The other thing I looked at, it was around building materials. And we had a, this Saturday, we were out as a council, looking at these neighborhood nodes, analyzing, you know, different types of development that we thought worked or things that we would have different. And I think a consensus was that, you know, there are certain materials that are a little more timeless. And... more timeless. And as much as I know our applicant, Mr. Abithera, you're looking for something that is edgy and that young people would like, and I totally respect that. I think that's wonderful, and, you know, we're wanting to see young professionals come in. But as I think about those building materials and think about our conversation on Saturday, you know, I can't help, as I think to me, the more you have brick and other materials, there's a timeliness to that, and I can't help but to wonder in 10 or 20 years, would something that was edgy, maybe in 2022, may have lost some of that edge in 10 or 20 years, whereas if there was more brick and different materials, that maybe you would have something that would have more of a durability and kind of, I think, the feel that I know for myself, I'm thinking about what I'd like to see in this city. So overall, I just, in my just honest opinion, I don't believe that this development in its current state is compatible with what I'm seeing around. I do want to be clear that I'm not unopposed to multifamily housing, and actually would really love to see something more, the duplex, would love to see something more of those stacked ranches, fourplexes, something else that just fits more within the character or just the kind of what you see around it. Because that was the other thing with materials, if you look around at what you see, there just didn't seem to be a match in my mind as I looked around. And to get to the traffic, so that was the health safety concern of mine. I did, you know, we did hear, and really grateful to have our traffic expert explain that some of the traffic issue is not necessarily due to the entrance. You know, there's still that lived experience, and Ms. Pruitt shared it herself, what she hears and what she sees. So I can't help but to be a bit concerned about that. And I do know that by right, if this was office, commercial, there would be more traffic. But I think in my mind is if it was something, and I know that's not what we have before us, but if it was something more along the lines of a duplex or fourplex, it's less dense, there would be less people, there's less units, so less people, essentially less traffic. So less potential for there to be other issues, even if, you know, the data would say that the issue is on the road, but my experience, and I'm an anthropologist, so I look at numbers and I look at lived experience and the experience of residents, I do think it's a bit of both. That, yes, if you had another form of housing, that potentially you would have less density and less traffic, and that would then better preserve the health, safety, and welfare of our residents that we have to think about first and foremost. So with all that in mind, and difficult kind of deliberation is, I have to be honest, at this time, I can't support this project. But I'm grateful to our applicant, who is a resident, I know cares deeply about this city, and I look forward, look forward to the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga. Additional discussion? Councilmember Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Pruitt mentioned, you know, remembering having horses going down Dequinder. I've been a resident of the city since 1976. I remember when there was that big red barn on Long Lake, the farm, you could buy your produce from there. And Long Lake and Dequinder were both two-lane roads, not even a center turn lane. It was, it was pretty quiet. Things certainly have changed in those 40-some, 40-some years. Some for the better, maybe some, well, we look back with nostalgia on the days of the horses and the barns. This is not my first conditional rezone, but I have to say this is probably the hardest conditional rezone that I've dealt with in my six and a half years on council. And I say that because I do understand how difficult the traffic is in that area. I drive it all the time. Every week, I'm at the Kroger pickup, I'm watching traffic and looking at near misses, quite honestly. And then I avoid making a left turn onto a Dequinder and go the long route so I can make a right turn onto Long Lake. It's not a great situation. And frankly, I'd prefer not to have any additional development to add to the traffic condition, but the reality is, that's not an option, right? Property owners have rights, and we know by right, Mr. Abithera, could build the 25 townhomes as you had submitted back in 2019. If this council were to vote no tonight, you could still develop that plan tomorrow if you chose to. So I have to remind myself, the options on the table are a by-right development, which could be 25 townhomes, it could be a medical building, it could be a commercial building, all of which will add traffic, the residential adding the least amount of traffic. So it's a by-right development or a very similar conditional rezone with a very similar development that adds, I'll say, more provisions for guest parking as well as the sidewalk. For me, the meandering sidewalk is probably of less interest to me, and there's probably a reason why I'm not on Planning Commission. But guest parking is one where, if I'm looking at a cluster development or other development projects, this council knows, I usually ask about guest parking because it can lead to traffic situations or illegal parking and gets into other problematic issues. The provisions put in for landscaping, should this get rezoned, do seem like the developer has put thought into putting as much buffer between the two pieces of property as possible. To me, it's still not the most ideal project in the world. It is a very unusual piece of property. That flag-shaped property is, I imagine it had a lot of challenges even to scheme up a plan. I have, since the fall, when this originally came to council, I have gone back and forth on what is the right thing to do. I am, I hate to say this, and I don't mean to sound disrespectful, Mr. Abithera, please don't know, I'm not maligning any of your work that you've done, but I'm grudgingly supportive of this rezone because it does add a little bit more in terms of landscaping that might have occurred by right. Something is going to go into that parcel of land that's tucked in behind the Taco Bell. And I think this may be the best option, even if it may not be the optimal option.
Thank you, Councilmember Abraham. Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I share a lot of Councilmember Abraham's perspective. It's the classic rezone and cluster ordinance dilemma we have, is that we can't stop development. Property owners have rights, and what that means is if we deny something, or Planning Commission denies something without a good reason, it goes to court and gets approved anyway. So because the property owners have rights by our state, but to me, as you said, versus if we deny this, I think what would then get developed there would probably be less desirable than this for the neighbors and for the community. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. I haven't said much, because I've been really deliberating this a lot in my head, because this is, I do struggle. This is a difficult decision in this case. My biggest issue, my biggest concern, was traffic because of that area. It is, it's a heavy, densely trafficked area and, you know, the potential for accidents. I know that the traffic studies said that there's been only two accidents, you know, in the past year or so. But, you know, there's the potential, obviously, for that. But also hearing that other options, such as an office space and especially a medical office, would generate even more traffic is even more concerning. So the fact that there will be something developed there, it's not going to be a single-family home, it's not going to be empty land, it's going to be something. And the fact that, you know, a multi-residential area is actually going to generate less traffic than an office space, you know, is compelling. So, I mean, and like, like Councilmember Abraham said, it's not the optional, it's not the optimal decision. Obviously, there, we would like to maybe see something, maybe less density or something else that could be there. But I think, given the fact that property owners do have rights, and there are other options that could be developed there that could be less desirable than the multifamily homes, I would, I am also supporting, supporting this today.
Thank you, Councilmember Brooks. Councilmember Hoderick?
I had written myself into a no on this, and the traffic discussion tonight was because of the safety, because I was worried, and my assumptions as a layperson were that this would be the greatest increase in traffic. So reading the studies, hearing the conversation tonight was very helpful to me. I had an issue with the shared drive, and then I'm hearing about how that's actually an effort to, that's not necessarily a bad thing. So it's amazing, the assumptions we make in our world when we're not in our realm of expertise and what we can learn through listening. So I've really appreciated that dialogue. I know the applicant cares about the city and wants to do something nice there, because he lives here too. And so, and I did watch the Planning Commission meetings, the conversations, the nudges for doing something different, for improving. I know what you worked on in that regard, and I appreciate that you did and that you took those many thoughts into consideration. But then I'm still twisted up because the one thing I can do is try to be really a resident, put myself in the resident's shoes there. And that is even problematic because the resident that's here tonight to speak to us, I understand exactly where you're coming from and that buffer. I've also spoken to residents that live on the west side who like the idea of this coming in because it provides the buffer for them between looking out at Taco Bell and the Kroger. So this is a classic case of not everybody's going to feel the same way, and you can't make everybody happy. As we talk about the rezoning of that strip, which, that's a promise that was made prior to us, and I pay attention to that, I'm not disregarding that. But the idea of what could go there, my sense, when I stand there and consider the plan, was that that buffer is still there because it's guest parking spots, walkway, landscaping. It's not like you're going to have an edge of a building that's coming into that, that area, right? It's a different kind of buffer, and yet it's still space. And the guest, the increased guest parking comes back to my traffic safety concerns, which if we said no, and the applicant went back and said, okay, fine, I'll do what I was originally going to do and have it was less guest parking, I'm not sure if that serves you all well in the end there. So, you know, I'm speaking to you and any residents watching, all of these things are swirling, obviously, through all of our minds as we make a decision. So I'm kind of glad to know I wasn't the only one a little twisted up on this. Something is going to go there. What is there right now is not pretty. I mean, if you walk on it, you're wanting something to happen. And while it might not have been the design I would come up with, that's also not in my wheelhouse, and I'm not a builder, and I'm not someone here that sells. And I believe the applicant has put forth, in that regard, a good-faith, experienced effort with our Planning Commission to develop that. So with my safety issues aside, I find myself, from the table, I can write my yes that I couldn't write before, I can't write the no that I was writing before. And that's how I do this. I write out, if I voted yes, what would be my reasons? I write out, I look at voting no, and I write out my reasons and then argue that out. I can complete a yes sentence now that I couldn't over the weekend or even earlier this afternoon. And, but it's with a great degree of thoughtfulness that I'm getting to that. So I see you nodding, you understand. Thank you. And thank you to the applicant for the amount of time you've had to put in with the patience. And we want to get this right for everyone involved, including you. It matters that in the end, we've worked with you from our lane as best we can to get to the best place.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoderick. Yeah. So like Councilmember Abraham, six and a half years of conditional rezonings and cluster developments and this kind of stuff, they're all unique and that they're all the same, but this one is interesting. And I, and certainly, Councilmember Hoderick, you've served longer than both of us, so you've had more. But, you know, I, I don't, I didn't know where the rest of council was coming in tonight, honestly. We, for those watching, we're not, we're prohibited from having too much conversation outside of these chambers that potentially could be deliberations. So we don't know what the majority is generally thinking. We're really not allowed to go there. So it was interesting and enlightening to have this council speak tonight. We haven't had a lot of these before this particular makeup of council, had a lot with the previous council, and whipped up a lot of public attention as a result, I think. So here we are today, talking about this. And I appreciate very much Mr. Abithera being here tonight, Planning Commission a few times. I mean, I appreciate you coming, and, you know, a lot of people send their representative. It's nice to have the actual owner and developer here to share your perspective. And I know you're a resident, longtime Frey resident and part of our community, and I think that shows also. Mr. Savadat, always thank you for explaining what you do and recognizing your role in all of this is to work with all sides of the development process, certainly the council, residents, developer, and try to piece it all together, and we appreciate that. Ms. Merrill, it's great to have you up here. I don't know if you spoke more than you thought you would, but we appreciate that because the safety aspect of this project was probably our biggest concern because of the traffic. You answered a lot of questions that I think, I know I had, a lot of us had, and, you know, we're a pretty big city these days, all things considered, and there's going to be increased traffic, and there's going to be issues with it, no matter what. I love to hear that we are constantly working at curb-cut issues and trying to figure out what's going to help as best we can. Some of it seems counterintuitive to me, but obviously, you're the experts on that, and I appreciate that perspective very much. So the three of you, thank you. Ms. Pruitt, I appreciate you coming. You know, public hearing, we never know who's going to come. I'm glad you came because I think your perspective is key, and I, you know, I appreciated seeing your understanding of Councilwoman Hoderick's comments a little bit. I can see it in your, I can only see your eyes, but I appreciated it in your eyes, and I do think you do understand the position we're in. And I love that you would prefer residential there than anything else. I think it would be unfortunate if you were up here saying, no, I think that residential's bad. So at least there's that, I guess. My, a couple of quick thoughts more. It's strange for us to rezone something out of environmentally protective, especially when you hear so much in this community about trees and preservation of trees and the wildlife. And so it's always a, I think it puts us all on alert a little bit when we're expected to, or asked to rezone something out of environmentally protected. Like I said earlier, and my understanding, I understand your position on where that came from, it clarifies things for me a little bit. Like Councilmember Hoderick, I think, and I hope, that this buffer may not be the, what you always envisioned it would be, but I do think it's better than, well, what's there now, certainly, or what could be there with 50 in-and-out car trips in a peak hour for a medical office or something. So I'm hopeful that between the landscaping and the special attention paid by Mr. Abithera to address some of those issues, it will still provide you with a good enough buffer. I don't like approving things just for the I, I don't like approving things just for the good enough aspect of it, but it seems like lately a lot of our decisions as it relates to these come down to that. And several, or at least one of you said, or I think it was Edna, you know, this isn't the optimal necessary project, but it's, it's probably the best we can get. And that's again, no slam line, you, Mr. Abitheria. I, I look at conditional rezonings a little bit different. To me, it really is about the master plan and the zoning ordinance. I think it's less our role to focus on building materials and site plan review. That's really not what we're approving from that perspective, or at least in my opinion. So I, I recognize the value in having those discussions and talking about different kinds of buildings being put there and certainly materials. But that's something that we're working to address in our master plan update and that is something that'll have to come a little more. But at this point, I think it's premature for us to have too much, put too much weight on those issues as a reason to approve a conditional or deny a conditional rezoning. So having the environmental protection aspect covered, I think, pretty clearly tonight, having the traffic issues addressed, I will be supporting this conditional rezoning. I would hope that traffic enforcement can be looked at a little deeper as we continue. Certainly, I don't know what our rights are. I can't imagine that Taco Bell is allowed to just put cars wherever they want them when they're stacking in their drive thru. I don't know at this point what can be done about that, but it certainly seems like it's only getting worse. COVID has not helped because now everything is drive thru. But I can imagine 25 new units having residents there aren't going to like a bunch of cars blocking their only access into their home either. So I could see that being a potential problem beyond my purview here and what I can do, but I put it out there in the air to be discussed. Just making sure I covered all my important things. I'm pretty certain these, as soon as you build them, they'll be sold. That's what happens here in Troy, like you said. And I hope, Ms. Pruitt, that you get some nice new neighbors at least out of it. If there's a silver lining, maybe you'll meet some really nice people. And I mean that sincerely. I know as a vacant lot, that's never ideal and it wasn't, it's not even a wooded beautiful lot. It's just a pretty much vacant lot. So let's hope for some good neighbors and some nice trees and landscaping in there. And like I said, I will be approving. So I'll call for the vote, Ms. Stewart.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
No.
Mayor Protem Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Abitheria, thank you for coming again this evening. I'm going to take a five minute recess. We'll come back in five. Anyone have any comments on the reports this evening? All right. Next up are council comments. Any council comments? Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, of course, you know, our hearts and prayers continue to be with Ukraine and especially with our Ukrainian-American residents right now. Just two quick things related to that. Was in touch with Senator Peters' office and they said they welcome me to share this information that they have actively, they've received some requests from Troy residents who are, you know, Ukrainian background and have family members in Ukraine and, or friends even, and that the Senator's office, they have caseworkers here in Detroit and can help actually provide consulative service to help make sure there's visas and, and to help not get them out, but to make sure they have the papers they need to come to the U.S. So just wanted to share the information that if you are listening and, and you have any loved ones who may be in Ukraine right now or dear friends, is you may call Senator Peters' Detroit office at (313) 226-6020. That's (313) 226-6023. And you can ask for an immigration caseworker and they would be very happy to help. Also can reach out to me. My email is on the website, rachamberlin@troymi.gov. And also can make sure that the appropriate persons know to help move the case forward. So I just want to thank Senator Peters' office for offering that help as we do have a large Ukrainian-American population here. The other quick thing was, I shared this on my social media, is Troy resident Vera Patricia, who did a very moving invocation, and thank you to the mayor for inviting her last week. She leads a nonprofit working with children in Ukraine and this, this initiative is really, she's collecting and there's information, you can reach out to me or it's on my social media through her church, her Ukrainian church. They're looking in particular for children's clothing. I know myself, having a young child, we had all these saved baby clothes and toddler clothes and we were wondering, you know, what to do with them. So we did, we went through, we went through tons and tons of them and were able to donate them to this initiative as you have young children who are having to flee conflict and they don't have time or they don't, they don't have the ability to be able to bring all the things that they need with them. Sometimes they hardly have any clothes. So feel free, check out, it's on my social media or feel free to reach out to me and just encourage you all to donate. You have another, another week or so that you can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain Kryanga. Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you mentioned it earlier, but last Saturday, we had a special council meeting at 8:30 a.m. to really have a significant step in the review of our master plan. It was a focus on neighborhood nodes, which to those who haven't read the master plan is many of the major intersections within Troy and the zoning and master planning around them. And we traveled onsite with city staff to four locations to get a sense of the history of them and the development there. And it was extremely valuable insight. Planning Commission and residents did a similar thing a few months ago, but we didn't want to do it with them to have any unduly, undesired influence on that. So I found it very enlightening. It was really incredible to kind of get the feel of what different developments looked like. And I think it helped clarify for all of us what we're kind of looking for in the future. And so I ask residents, stay involved because this year as it gets warmer, as we get outside more, this master planning process is going to continue with the Planning Commission and with the city council. We're going to have a joint meeting soon. And this is an issue a lot of us, when we were campaigning and ran for office, was something residents were most passionate about. So I encourage residents, get involved because this is heating up soon. And we're really going to study hard and look forward to this.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Additional council comments? Okay. Me neither. There we go. There's, nobody signed up for public comment for items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. And there's no closed session this evening, so we are adjourned.